...tonight and two speakers in favor.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if there's no other questions, I guess I'll still reserve an opportunity to comment on this motion before the vote unless there are other questions.
Yeah, this is the question phase. We've got a motion and a second, so.
Okay. Well, there's no other questions for anyone else?
We're about to take the vote after the question phase.
Very good, sir. In that case, I'll just take this opportunity to say that, you know, we've had citizens who've been very diligent about organizing around this issue. It is no small feat and no small task for folks to come in to City Hall in the way that they have, and now this is the second time that they've organized and arrived here. And it seems like if she was on the other foot, we would not be tabling this if they were not available, and the applicant was indeed available. So, you know, at a certain point in my line of work, a judge will tell the attorneys, "You've had enough continuances. It's time to try your matter." In this case, all of us here on the dais are serving as those decision makers, and I think today will be the day to say, "You've had enough continuances. Everyone here is ready to speak and take this matter to the next step." And if they're not prepared to do that, then they need to withdraw their application. So for that reason, I'm voting against this, and I hope that a majority of the colleagues will stand with the people here.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. Council's seen other questions. We'll look to you on the Davis Mahndros motion to continue to 126-26. All right, look to you for your vote. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Ray.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, that carries. So, those voting against Jensen Benevente and Banks-McLaughlin, the rest voting for Mr. Harmon or Madam Attorney. As mentioned, like the courts usually will give you three continuances in any way that this can be impressed upon these folks that we either need to hear this or dispose of it.
A member of the body could include that in a motion.
Well, I think we just voted on that one, but.
Could take another motion from the floor.
You want... Well, I don't want to complicate it, but I think that's something that needs to be communicated, just, you know, in respect of time, you know, as an incident, and then, you know, at some point, the courts do say after two or three times.
I mean, I'm willing to make the motion, but I do have a question before the motion. So when did the email come in that they were not going to be able to be here?
It was originally sent... Let me pull that up to make sure I have it correct, ma'am. The official request to table was Friday, October 10th. I responded on Monday, October 13th.
So my next question is, when we have six people here that signed up, did we call them?
I actually called the ones that we had phone numbers for. We did not have phone numbers for every one of them, but I did call the ones we had numbers for.
Okay, so, and I'm just going back to what was said. This is the second night that they have come, and we... So if we had ample time, I just don't understand that. But if... But what I'll do is, what was the motion again? I'm sorry.
Well, it was basically just to either do a new motion just to impress that, I think, if the council passes this, that to imply or to communicate that this was the last continuance.
That third time is it?
To see that they can withdraw and start over, or something to dispose of it.
Okay, so I make a motion that if the applicant does not show up at the next one on January 26, I think it was, that they will need to withdraw the application and start all over.
All right. You had a question, Ms. Hahn? All right, there's a question. Councilman Mahndros, so let me get this. As the motion my mayor brought to him, second by Councilmember here. You had a question, Councilman Mahndros?
Yeah, I just, I don't know that I can support this. If this isn't part of our policy, and we've never done this before, I think, Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned communicating council's desire of that, but to make a formal... I just don't want them treated necessarily any different than anybody else. So either, I mean, this is something we can look at either Policy Committee or any other committee of putting in our policies or code of ordinances, but if there's no limit to this codified in our code of ordinances or policies, I don't know why we're treating this applicant any different than any other. Either there is a limit or there's not.
I can retract that and just say to take it back to the Policy Committee.
Why not?
But I also think that we need to, in the Policy Committee, talk about getting phone numbers.
Well, let me say this. My purpose was to be able to communicate some reasonable expectation to the applicant, to say that if this is something that's held our docket twice. So I don't know that it needs to be a policy change in order for the board to always have discretion as to when to apply guidance for people, because they're bringing this, they're holding space. You know, I understand emergencies happen, but typically the courts, you'll hear them say, as Councilman Benevente said, that, you know, "This will be the next time or the last time." And so if that needs to be wrapped up in a motion, but I think this is mainly Councilmember Mahndros to see if the board had a will to communicate that. Now, it doesn't necessarily have to be a resolution or any type of ordinance, but it will just be something that can be communicated on behalf of the council when they notify the applicant of his approved continuance. So is that... Are you still okay with that?
I'd need to hear the motion restated.
All right.
So if I get it right, the motion is to make sure that the applicant is aware that if he does, he or she does not show up on January 26, 2023, that they will have to start the application process over. 2026, I'm so sorry. January 26, 2026, that they will have to start the process over.
Well, and if I may, as well, Mr. Mayor, I think we can say that they will not get another continuance, but I don't think we can force them to withdraw.
That's better. That's better. They will not get another continuance. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Herron and Thompson.
Now, we don't have policy for ongoing items to be continued. Then, are you saying that it's out of order or not move to go forward to the Policy Committee, at least for some discussions of this, because this is something that could continue to come forward again?
So, only thing I was saying, that was Councilman Mahndros's position, I'm saying that the body, the board, needs the discretion because each situation is different. So you wouldn't want to make a firm policy that you may have to make an exception for if you broke it and said that you only get three continuances, and then some extenuating circumstance happens. So the only thing I was trying to do is get enough of a consensus that it could be communicated when they give him his new date to say that the council is going to be ready to hear this matter on January 26.
Okay, I'm good with that. I'm ready to vote.
All right, any... Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just sitting up here thinking, because there is no policy as the policy chair. And, Mr. Harmon, has this occurrence ever happened before?
We've had it come up before, where we've had multiple requests for tables.
Continuances. And what was done in those instances? How many times do you know that an item was tabled?
Probably around threes, as many as I can think of, but there could be some point in the past where we've done more than that. I just don't recall.
So was there any suggestion of creating a policy or ordinance to preclude them from having more than three extensions?
Not that I recall in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I think, I think where we're talking about what is going on here, and I stated that, is that we have had people come out to speak twice, and they've waited here, they've come up, and we've said, "We're continuing it." I think if we knew on October 12th, if we could have gotten in touch with them and said, "This is going to be continued," then that would have been a different story. So that's when I said I can bring it back to ask that. But if I need to withdraw the motion, I can do that, if it's going to take another 30 minutes.
Hold on just a second for clarification. I'm coming to you. All right, here. All right, Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mayor Protem, I like that idea now that I think about it, because that can be brought back to policy, that we get the phone numbers of these individuals so when we have ample enough time to notify them that this is going to be tabled, they don't have to show up. That we can bring back to policy, Mr. Mayor.
My only concern with that is that when it's notified, they don't know it's going to be tabled until council comes together.
Right.
And we don't come together until our meeting. So I don't think that's going to work.
Yeah, because it's just a request. It's just a request. The council may or may not grant it at the time, so.
Can I go back to my motion?
Let me bring it back to this particular case, right? We have continued this to January the 26th of 26. The only question I pose for the body is, is there a will to communicate for this case that to imply or to communicate to the applicant that we will be ready to move forward on January 26? That's the question that I have today. Now, if there's a broader question, can we just capture that separately? All right, so the vote will be, or whatever consensus you'll need, Ms. Manager, Acting Manager, for the city to notify him of that, if there's a consensus of this body, that please be prepared on January 26.
Yes, sir. If that's the will of council, we can certainly communicate that.
All right, council. So this is a temporary check on your will. So, Madam, Mayor Protem, is your motion still standing, or you want to do something different?
I think exactly what you're saying is my motion.
Okay, all right. So we're ready to go. All right. Counsel, I'll look to you for action. This is consensus to communicate what was stated. Madam, can you clear the system for us, Jen? I'm still... All right, there we go. All right. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Ray.
All right, all right. So, Mr. Harmon, you got it. It's communicated.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Those voting in oppose. Councilman Mahndros in green. Motion carries eight to two. So, look forward to dealing with this again on the 26th. All right. So, item 9.02. Mr. Harmon, is that you as well?
It is, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. The other public hearing we have this evening is an annexation. You may recall during your consent agenda, you tentatively approved a new zoning for this property. If it is annexed, that new zoning would be LI or Light Industrial. This is property owned by CRA Commercial Development. Ms. Lori Epler with Larry King and Associates is representing them. It's located at 3456 Black and Decker Road. It's just over two and a half acres. This is in Councilman Davis's jurisdiction. Just to give you an idea of where the property is located, we've got Black and Decker here. This is the Walmart that faces Gillespie here. All of these properties through this area are all either city or county industrial properties. This property is currently zoned MP in the county, which is manufacturing, which is their version of our industrial districts. Currently, the property is vacant and wooded. Just some photos of some of the surrounding things. There is a housing development kind of to the south, mainly to the south, and some to the east of the property. But other than that, everything is industrial around it. Staff does recommend adoption of this proposed ordinance, annexing this property with an effective date of today. If you have any questions of this, if you would, wait to pose those to staff after your legislative hearing is over. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harmon. With that, we'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have one speaker, Ms. Lori Epler.
Ms. Epler, how are you?
Well, Mr. Mayor and Council, as you heard, the initial zoning was passed on your consent agenda, so we're just asking for the annexation so that this property can be developed. If you have any questions, that's why I'm here. Otherwise, I'll let you with your business.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, have any... Councilmember Davis, you had a question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay. Let me scan your colleagues. I don't see any. All right, let me close the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Epler.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I move to adopt the annexation ordinance with the effective date of October 27, 2025.
All right. This is motion by Councilmember Davis, seconded by Councilmember Thompson to adopt the ordinance that approves annexation. Any discussion on that? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. The screen ain't working with us tonight, is it, Jen? All right. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Ray.
All right. Motion carries unanimous. All right, counsel, motion to adjourn? Yes, sir. Oh, oh, man, I got excited. Oh, we skipped the item. So that's what it is. All right. Sorry about that, chiefs. We're still cool. I'm sorry. All right. We moved the nine-point items to the middle, so I'm sorry. My fault. All right. Councilmember here, I got excited.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure before we move to that item, I want to make sure I'm on the same page, because we did not speak of it down here, but in our consent item, 7.0A5, and the time that I was speaking of in our pre-meeting for 0, I mean, for 1912, Merkison Road for the demo, and the additional time that I was having the discussion about, and that it would be worked out between the owner and staff. Did we need to do anything about that? Because nothing was said upstairs, and it was just left.
It's passed. Right now, the order's in place.
Well, the order, it was not to change the order.
Right.
It was to give the property owners 60 days to work with staff on whatever corrections or other provisions they were having the discussion about. That was what... But I never was taking it off of the demo.
I understand. So right now, there's a demo order, right, that will go through its process, which is more than likely that long, but you all want to speak to the process?
And I understand that, and thank you, Mayor, but so that we can have something in the minutes to support what the discussion was.
Yeah, I think that... So, Councilmember here, we're going to have to, what we'll do is, if you want to, because that item's gone, so you'll have to reintroduce something to go back and deal with that. You're saying to put some terms or provisions. Let me go to the attorney from a procedural standpoint. Ms. AC, I'm struggling. How does that work?
Yes, sir. We could work with all property owners once you all approve a demolition ordinance. Our efforts to obtain voluntary compliance does not stop there, and we do not have the ability to turn around the day after you all approve an ordinance and go out with a contractor.
Right, which I mentioned to the property owner.
Yes, sir. There is a process. It does take some time. And certainly during the time where we're still running our process to identify who our contractor is going to be and get them under contract, we're also in communication with property owners. If it's the property owner's desire to bring the property into compliance, we certainly continue to work with them right up until the very last second.
Well, then, if I could, just putting it in the minutes, not trying to change what has already been approved, I would like for that discussion to be full, that full discussion to be with the 2005 Merkison Road property. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I think the clerk captured at least a recording, so she'll document it accordingly. All right, moving to 8.0. Chief Dove, where you at, man? I didn't mean to leave you out. Come on up. All right. Good to see you, chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Fire Chief Kevin Dove before you tonight to present the 2025 Fire Department Third Quarter Report. First, we want to share a few quick highlights from the third quarter. We advertised a hiring process for our planned January 2026 academy, and we received 245 applicants. 63% of those applicants were from underrepresented populations, and 40 were female. 25 recruits graduated from our fire academy and are completing EMT school as we speak. We're excited to have these recruits on the fire trucks next week. Something really exciting. Our search and rescue team completed training in the new house underwater training prop at the Fayette Tech Regional Fire Training Facility. This prop is the first of its kind in the world. Our folks have the opportunity to simulate working in and train on traversing a flooding house and removing themselves and victims from windows and attics during those situations. I want to take a minute to recognize the folks at FTCC. They bend over backwards to ensure that our responders have everything they need to operate safely and successfully in any situation, and this is just the latest example. Our third quarter called 8,593 total calls for service, with August being the busiest at 2,620 of those. Here are incidents by category. As always, our medical and rescue calls are the lion's share at 4,854. There were 842 service calls, and these include things like water leaks, public service lift assists, assist police with some equipment, and illegal burning. There were 793 good intent calls, and these are largely calls that were canceled en route to, or smoke scares, or no incident found upon arrival. There were 659 false fire alarms, 229 fires, and 213 hazardous condition calls. These are not to be confused with hazardous materials calls, even though hazardous materials calls fall into there, but these also include things like power lines down, overheated motors, electrical arcing from damaged or defective equipment. Our response times remain consistent and well under our eight-minute total response time goal. We responded to 50 structure fires. 19 of those started in the kitchen. That number's trending back down in the right direction, so we're happy with that, but we've still got work to do. There were no fire fatalities, eight civilian injuries, and three firefighter injuries. 68% of the structure fires were contained to the room of origin. We were able to improve our dollar saved ratio. This quarter, we're at 97.3%, which means while we had 1.5 million in property loss, we saw 58.4 million in property saved. There were 23 vehicle fires, four incendiary fires, and one lithium ion battery fire. Top three fire losses last quarter were a multifamily dwelling on Tolstone Drive, a single-family dwelling on Elmhurst Drive, and a commercial structure on Merkison Road. As we said, there were 4,854 medical responses. As you can see, the overdose responses and Narcan administered by the Fire Department continue trending downward. There were 65 total hazmat responses. 38 of those were natural gas leaks, five were carbon monoxide responses, 12 hydrocarbon spills, and our regional response team responded to five calls outside of the city. Onto our human capital. At the end of the third quarter, we had six firefighter vacancies and one fire inspector vacancy. Just last Monday, we welcomed Academy 2-25, so as of today, we don't have any firefighter vacancies, and we're only carrying one fire inspector vacancy. We had eight resignations, three retirements, and one reinstatement. Of the eight resignations, only one left for another job in the fire service. And again, that's big for us and our business. We're up to 25% underrepresented population at the end of the third quarter. While this number is still short of our goal of 30%, it is the highest in my tenure, and with the outcome of our hiring processes, we look forward to continue to move that to the goal. As you can see here, our training and recruitment staff stayed busy in the third quarter. They did hiring, career development, promotions, and continuing education for our department. The department as a whole completed nearly 34,000 hours of training in the third quarter alone. Our goal is not to train until we get it right. Our goal is to train until we can't get it wrong. Moving into the Fire Marshal's office. As you know, we've had a significant makeover of our Fire Marshal's office in the past year and a half. We've added staff and refocused some efforts with several goals in mind. The overarching goal is that everyone that does business in the city of Fayette does it safely while meeting the intent of the fire code. Nothing more, nothing less. The second goal is that every patron and every business in the city of Fayette is safe and not exposed to any harm. Lastly, we want to ensure that anyone and everyone that wants to do business in the city can do it, with us providing timely plan reviews and permitting from the Fire Department side. As you can see, new plan reviews are up by over 500. These are things like building plans, site plans, fire extinguishment systems, gates and barricades, and many other things. These are often requested as express reviews, and with our reconfiguration of the office, we're now able to meet the time requirements set forth by general statute. Our fire inspections are down slightly, even with the new staff. This is because we have three inspectors in training. They'll be within the next month, and this number will increase significantly next quarter. Fire inspections and maintenance inspections include apartments, group homes, foster homes, hotels, and any other commercial occupancy. They also include tent inspections, special event inspections, and fireworks inspections. Depending on the occupancy type, the inspections are done on a one-year, two-, three-year rotation per general statute. Now, the fire code violations shook me up some, because they're up dramatically. The number took me by surprise because it doesn't correlate to an increased number of inspections like 2024 did. So a great deal of my time, and probably some of the time when I should have been sleeping, was going over these numbers, trying to digest them, and working with the Fire Marshal to understand the data. The real and honest answer is our Fire Marshal's office is just doing a better job. But I won't, and I need everyone to understand, we're not in the gotcha business. That's not what we do when we do inspections. We're in the business to make everything meet fire code. Now, with that said, 47% of these violations are identified and corrected at the same time. So as the inspector and the occupant walk through the business, they identify them, they fix them, everything's good. This doesn't require any re-inspections or money out of our business owner's pockets. The rest are largely things that require a licensed contractor to fix or additional parts or materials that aren't immediately available. We then follow up in 30 days to confirm that these items have been addressed. I say all that to say that we, as a department, need to do a better job of educating our business owners before the inspection. We have to give them the test, but we can also give them the answers to the test before we get there. So you're going to soon be seeing some social media information, podcasts with information. We're going to send out flyers and other educational information to our business owners, and be looking to do some other creative outreaches by our Fire Marshal's office, our community risk reduction folks, and the help of the city's marketing and communications group. It's our goal and our responsibility to make information available to business owners so that we can set them up for success, and so that's what we're going to do. The top five violations that we found are electrical issues, portable fire extinguishers, general items such as address markers, and outdated equipment, emergency power systems, and fire protection equipment. So now we're moving on to the community risk reduction, the good stuff. The third quarter allowed us to engage 6,655 residents, attend 164 community events, install 343 smoke alarms, 84 carbon monoxide alarms, and three stove-top fire suppressors. We installed and/or corrected 59 child We installed and/or corrected 59 child safety seats, taught 358 more folks hands-only CPR, gave eight station tours, and held three youth fire setter interventions. And now, like a broken record, as always in, smoke alarms save lives, folks. I don't know how else to say it. Fire does not discriminate. If you or anyone you know needs a smoke alarm or needs one check, please call us immediately at 433-1116, and we'll be there promptly to take care of you at no cost. No one should lay their head down to sleep without a working smoke alarm. And with that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Chief. Great presentation. Councilman Behar.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions, just want to continue to give a thumbs up to that last scan bar that you had up there on screen. Chief, would you put it back, please, about the free smoke detector so citizens can look at it again? I just want to support that statement that you said, Chief, that smoke detectors, they do, and smoke alarms, they do save lives, and we can't say it enough. We give this information out to all of our community watch or community meetings. I give it all the time. I know the number by heart, and so we continue to push. And I love to give you all accolades on this because I have had a smoke detector and a carbon monoxide detector installed free by our fire department. Great job, put it in the perfect places wherever you all thought they needed to be cleaned up after yourselves, and was gone in about 20 minutes. So, thank you, and I hope that our citizens will write down this number, 433-1116, or take a picture and scan the bar because truly, smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors save lives. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And you'll also see those QR codes on our fire trucks now. They're on there. If you see it at the grocery store or at a community event, you can walk up to the side of the truck and scan it.
Great. They work.
Thank you. Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Chief, for another great presentation. I'm excited that we're getting more done with less. That's very impressive. But two questions. Can you explain to the public why there was such a large increase in the calls in August?
Those, there are ebbs and flows. That really wasn't anything too exciting in our world. It's really about 100 calls more than July, and you've got to think, most kids are out of school, families are on vacation, there's a lot of travel at the mall, getting ready for school, so they just, people are busy.
Outstanding. This is more of a question that I don't know if I should address you or the city manager in his absence. Being retired military, I know the effects that your occupation can have on your life, not just while you're in that occupation, but also after you retire. I know our first responders, fire and police, see some things that most average person doesn't see. What precautions do we have, or programs, or counseling do we have to help these individuals during their tour and after they retire?
I'll take care of this one if you want. Up until about, probably three years ago, three years ago maybe, mental health was taboo in our business, okay? So, we're just starting to unpack the box. There is no perfect answer for your question. We are doing things. We brought on our first dog. We have another dog coming. We have peer support internal, we have peer support offered by the state, we have chaplain's corps, we have EAP, we have all those things. We have our fingers on the pulse of what everybody's doing nationally. My Metro Chiefs Group, we communicate regularly about it. Everybody's trying to figure that out, but the biggest thing that we don't have an answer for is post-employment because all of our stuff is available to our working folks. So, once you retire, there is, I mean, still our internal peer support and our state peer support is available, but after that, I don't know what, we don't have a good answer just yet. But we are, we're on it every day with our ears to the, ears to the street. We're watching, there's some other municipalities that have brought on some clinicians and done some things. We're watching those daily. We're trying to get the results from that, but I am comfortable and confident saying that anything that I come up with, I'll get full support from the city manager's office and from you guys because I've never not gotten that support. So, I know that didn't answer your question, but...
It did answer my question.
I hope that you're comfortable knowing that we have a health and safety officer, one of our assistant chiefs. We do know it's an issue. We are actively looking, but there is no answer at this time.
Let me just say that that was a conversation piece that we had during one of my chat and chews about some of the trauma that our first responders go through by some of the scenes that they have to go to, and it's traumatizing, and it stays with you for the rest of your life, and you're going to need that exterior help either now or in the future. We want to make sure that's available for all our first responders, so that is a great answer. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Councilman Davis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I think on the slide where you had the fire inspections, I wanted to thank you for, I think you say you get ready to inform the business owners and community of reference to violations because I receive a lot of phone calls and text messages and emails of reference to like churches that are stalled on projects and businesses because of the violations because they don't understand what the process is, so I just want to thank you for that, sir.
Yeah, that's, we, like I said, we have to give you the test, but there's nothing saying we can't give you the answers to the test beforehand.
If there's no other questions, I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
It's in your hand, sir.
A move that we accept a report from the fire department.
All right. There's a motion by Councilman Thompson, second by Councilmember Davis, discussion. All right, council, I'll look through it before you vote. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
Brian.
All right.
Great job, Chief.
All right, great job, Chief. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. And to your team, Chief. We know that no man's island by itself, so thank you to all the firefighters and to your team as well, first responders. All right. Chief Bryant, where are you at, sir? It's your turn. Come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to give Chief Dove and his team a round of applause in regard to being able to fill those vacancies because I understand the challenge it is today, and so it is extremely impressive when they're able to fill all their vacancies. So, I know what the conversation on there. So, Mayor, City Council, senior leadership team, junior madam, oh, she's already left, junior madam mayor, has to go to school. My name is Robert O'Brien. I'm the chief of police for Fayette Police Department. I'm here to present our third quarter report today. Here is our slide. All right, as you'll see, our third quarter report will cover January through September On our slide here, we'll cover our crime statistics, our crime trends, our fighting, crime fighting strategies, and our community engagement. As you'll see on this slide here, in terms of what we're doing as a department, total crime is down by over 10%, and our arrests are also down by just under 1%. You can see our persons against crime as well is down as well as our property crimes, and we continue to moving the downward trend. As you'll see, our violent crime, by far, the elephant in the room is regarding our homicides. Of course, you know, the beginning of the year, we were hit pretty hard with those, with incidents that took place, and so far, we're continuing to trend down, but because of that spike in the beginning of the year, we're still up at 68%. But if you look at the rest of the Part I crimes, our rape aggravated assaults, all other persons, those are all down double digits, so we're still being able to come ahead in terms of those numbers. As you'll see here, our homicide unit, where we have 32 incidents, 34 homicides, and you'll see also our overdoses and suicides.
Thirty-two homicides, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Just make sure the press got that. Mr. Duffy. Not 30, not 34. You got it. All right.
So, it's, so one of the things that I want to make sure, too, that we understand in terms of what we're looking at in terms of our homicide department, homicide unit, they're doing an exceptional job in terms of when we have the national rate for clearance is about 58%. Our current stance right now is 87.5, and we just recently attended the IACP, it was the International Association of Chief of Police, and they had other homicide units that were ranting about their numbers, and their numbers weren't even as good as ours. So, I would definitely commend our homicide units in being able to solve these crimes and put these bad actors in jail in terms of what we're able to do here in the city of Fayetteville.
Questions as we go? You want to wait till the end?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think he's just, I'll come back to you. Chief Bryant, go ahead.
Yeah, also, want to, also want to kind of specify, in terms of these homicides, we have about 10 of these incidents were domestic related, and another 18 of these homicides where there were known individuals that knew each other. So, none of these are just random in terms of, you know, random crimes. These are all individuals that know each other or have some type of relationship prior to. Regarding our domestic, these are our numbers. We are trending, you know, down in terms of those numbers as well, and we continue to work with the Phoenix Center to make sure that those victims that are in these toxic relationships receive the assistance that they need to get out of that situation, and also that we encourage for them and do everything we can to go ahead for them to press charges against those abusers.
Chief, before you go into this one, Councilman Thompson, you had something?
He answered the question. I wanted to know, what was the breakdown of the homicides? Were they domestic? How many were acts of kindness, I mean, acts of violence, whatever it was? So, he answered that.
All right. All right, Chief.
All right.
Push your button, Councilman.
All right. So, next here is our ShotSpotter, is our slides here. You'll see our numbers regarding 340 alerts, and it breaks down by district, and also the shell casings that are also recovered in each district, guns, and also arrests resulting in those ShotSpot alerts. I think one of the questions that came about last Friday in terms of when we have these arrests, out of these 14 arrests that we've had during this period, you're talking about 13 out of the 14 of these arrests were weapons recovered or related to a weapon. So, that is the numbers in terms of the requests that we had on Friday there. Councilman Benavente.
Through ShotSpotter.
Next slide is our ShotSpotter dashboard that any citizen here in Fayetteville or anywhere can go onto our website, and you can see these numbers. What I'll also make sure that everybody understands, these numbers are continuously fluctuating in terms of when we have an analyst that is able to provide additional information. Now, one of the questions that came up just recently is regarding the blanks, and as you see up there, it shows like 246, so currently, we're working with IT and members of their team with our team to figure out a better category in terms of blanks. So, there, it won't answer or raise questions regarding what is blank. Now, I'd like to give you an example of what we're talking about blank in terms of, I'll give you an example of this scenario here. We have, this was last Thursday, about 9:30 last night, last Thursday, about 9:30 last night. All of our commanders, we have this on our app on our phone. When we get an alert, this is what we experience and this is what we hear.
Jeez. Wow.
I'll play that one more time, and listen right after you heard the last shot. Tell me what you hear.
A car.
Thank you.
A spare tire.
That's what we hear. This call we responded to, there was no 911 call, there were no witnesses, there were no victims.
Thank God.
But our officers responded and recovered shell casings. That is categorized as a blank until we're able to tie those casings to an incident or to another case. That is what ShotSpotter does, and that's what we're talking about when we're talking about 80% of the alerts are those that are coming without a 911 call, but we're still able to gather something so that we can go ahead and move forward with an investigation. It might not happen today, might not happen next month, months for now, but usually, we're able to tie it up, and then we're able to kind of piece together where those shell casings are with other incidents that may occur in and about the city.
So, Chief, I did, I did have two questions. I guess Councilmember Benavente changed his perspective and asked a question.
Well, since you were applying it to him, you applied it to me.
That's all right.
Thank you. Chief Bryant, now, I appreciate this anecdotal example. How often do you guys review the sounds of those, I guess, 200 blanks, or how many was it exactly?
246, sir.
How many, do you guys review every single one of them?
We have a analyst that is assigned to listen to every single call and then categorize them, and then they put in the notes whatever notes that the field may have, and this is why, one of the things that we try to want to make sure that we educate the public is that this is not something that is happening right away because our analysts have to go through reports, they go through, they listen to these sounds, and then if any additional information that comes back from our NIBIN, which is where our casings, to be able to connect to another case, then they're being able to connect that particular casings or that incident back to another case.
Chief, I understand that if you find casings that you're able to do the NIBIN stuff. I'm not talking about that. I'm saying of the 246 examples, what window of time was this 246, from January until today?
That's correct.
So, how many of those 246 has been reviewed?
So, as you see, they're constantly being reviewed.
So, someone has listened to all 246 of those recordings?
Correct.
And you're saying that you're still unable to categorize them when you're listening to them?
Right. It's not only, it's not about just listening, it's whether or not we recovered any particular casings from that particular case, or if there was any witness or something that may come about later on that we're able to tie that particular incident to.
So, you were there when the Wilson Center kind of talked to us about the reason they were not able to give us as good of feedback as they did for Durham and Charlotte when it came to this program, and one of the reasons was because of the shoddy way that we collect data and that we report data when it comes to this program. And the reason I'm concerned about these blanks is because we're not actually asking the questions to give, I believe, a transparent and thorough answer to what this program does and doesn't do, because I know that it's always going to be a chief or a department head of any department to say only the good things, but I really need somebody, and if it's not going to be you, it's got to be the city manager or somebody else to tell tell me what are the pros and also the cons, because if you can't be, I guess, fair in your assessment to say, these are times when the ShotSpotter actually showed that it was a power tool. This was a time that ShotSpotter showed that it was, you know, somewhat, it was some other loud noise, because I've heard that from different members of your team, but I never hear it in public when it's time to actually be accountable to the citizens who want to know the good, the bad, and the ugly when it comes to a lot of money that we're spending on something, when, let's be honest, you just said it about the homicides, it's known people, it's domestic type situations, things that the police will never be able to really do anything about, that if we actually invested some of this money to help these people, that we start to eliminate the conditions that create those kinds of conflicts. But you're saying that, no, we need this money for these microphones. Great, tell us the good, the bad, and the ugly. All 246 ones of those recordings, you've heard and you can confirm that they are indeed gunshots?
No, they're still, they're still being reviewed, sir.
So, when you pick out one, just to show that, look, this is how it works, you give the impression that that's how it happened all 246 times, and that's not honest?
Well, it's not, I'm not, what, what we're talking about, that's a specific incident, but also, sir, if you can look at the misclassification by type, that is also where we're showing you that there's a false positive, where we have two false positive or three, three mislocated shots as well.
And what were those?
So, those, I couldn't tell you what those, I can tell you in terms of if it's a false positive, it was not a gunshot.
What was it then?
I, I, I couldn't tell you what it is, but I can tell you it wasn't a gunshot.
But do you see, like, what I mean, when you want to brag about the one time that it sounds very, very dramatic, and then you avoid maybe showing us a power tool that might sound just as similar? So, you can imagine the question marks that other cities have come to to say, hey, are we getting what we're paying for? Because we've had independent people who did not have skin in the game, who were not chiefs of their department, who want to paint things in a particular light, independent evaluators that said 23% of the time, you're getting good information. But then you come back and you say, actually, no, it is 99% of the time. And so, when I think about who's going to be more likely to be honest about it, I'm thinking it's going to be the independent evaluators without any skin in the game.
All right, Council, Councilmember, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll move on. Let's, let's keep this in a, in a inquisitive way and not accusatory way. All right. Councilman Maheran and I had a question, and Councilman Thompson.
Well, chief, a little bit where I differ is I'm happy, out of, let's just, whatever, what was the number?
Eighteen shots, sir.
Okay, but the 240?
Yes, sir.
Six? Out of the 246, as I have stated from the very beginning of using every helpful tool in our arsenal to support the fight against crime and these shootings and whatever this was, thank God, nothing was going on. I'm, I'm proud of that. I'm, I'm proud of the one out of, and I know it's more, but this particular incident on Southern Avenue, that there were, there were some shells in it, it, and if it wasn't for ShotSpotter, you said that there was no assistance of a 911 call with this. So, I, I, I do, I, I do support that, I'm thankful for that. As has been said many times, if we can, if we can help or shut down one, I'm thankful for that and having that tool. Now, my question also, because you said if there are shells, you're able to find shells and things on that line, and especially with this particular case, that you, you found some shells, do you all also, and this, this is just probably be a little crazy question, but do you also look for fingerprints?
Yes, sir. They'll, they'll do, our forensics will do a full analysis of everything that they can go ahead and recover from any shell casings that they also recover.
So, that is another part of a help with the ShotSpotter for this, you know, in the arsenal, in the toolbox, not only can we get the shells, but we can also get any possible fingerprints.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, chief. I just want to regurgitate something that I heard Chief Braden speak of while he was the chief, and I'm glad to see him in the back row back there. Which train, train, could they hear it all the time? So, I know that they know between what a gunshot is and what a power drill is. So, I'm working that they done, and the comment was made about shady work. I trust and believe that our officers are doing everything.
The term was shoddy, not shady.
Shoddy, shady, whatever determination that you use. I know that our police officers are truthful, I know that they're faithful, and I know that they're obligated to make sure they protect the citizens of this city, and I thank you for the work that you guys are doing.
Yeah, but don't misquote me, Thompson.
All right. Thank you. Press your button if you want to.
So, just to clarify then, because what I'm talking about is the investigatory work.
Councilmember Benevente, it's, it's not your turn. I'll come back to you in a moment. I said it was Councilman Thompson myself, and then press your button. All right. Chief, thank you. Thank you for that. And what I'll say is this, there's two things that you mentioned. One, I know the year started off really, really tough for us. And I think during your first quarter presentation, I was looking for it, when it did the year to year comparison, it was like 300-plus percent. And so, it's, it's declined significantly. Do you remember what we were at the second quarter or the first? Like, out of those 32, how many came the first three or four months, you know?
I know it was a lot, sir, but it was over, I know you're right, it was about over 300% at that time.
One of those reports, and then it trickled down, now it's down to 60. So, it's got a pretty sharp decline. I was just trying to see, I think it was like 25 the first three or four months?
366 was the percentage. 366 was the percentage at the time in terms of the comparison from 25 to 24.
And so, it's, so it's decreased to be 60%, and that is just a comparison to where it was this time last year.
That's correct.
Right. And so, I wanted to highlight that because, you know, at some point, the community took a stance, April, May, when, when it was a, a highlighted discussion and see that there's been a significant decrease. So, I'd like to see that maybe on, on some other chart that trends it by month to show, show if there was a precipitous drop in it. The other part I, I'd want to, to highlight is, I, I don't know about everybody, but when you hear 18 shots or so, you know, I grew up in a neighborhood that you hear that, and to the point of where sometimes they don't call 911 every time. Sometimes, as you said, now, for 14 guns to be recovered from is the you're matching these things to other incidents, and then eventually you make arrests. So, I think what would be helpful is if maybe that placeholder wasn't called blank to leave open to interpretation blanks, maybe, or, or some unknown, maybe they could rename that to pending.
Investigation. And that's what we're, we're working right now with, with members of the senior leadership team to develop a, a better category so that blank won't be there. So, we're going to do that and have that ready by the next quarter.
Right. Well, and, and I'm sure, and the final thing I'll say before I go to, to Councilman Benevente is, I'm, I'm sure the residents on Southern Avenue appreciated you showing up after they heard that. And, and whether it leads to something today or it leads to something tomorrow, I don't think this is a bad thing for you to have an extra tool to put you on the right path to show up and to respond. So, I'm glad, glad to hear you say that, and I look forward to continuing to hear more about it as we, as we analyze the data and everything. So, I'll go to Councilmember Benevente.
Yeah, I did have a question to clarify, but I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't being misquoted by Mr. Thompson. We had an independent evaluator say that the city of Fayetteville was not bringing data that other cities were keeping, and I use the term shoddy to describe our lack of data keeping in line with our peer cities. So, you can be offended by that if you'd like, but that's a simple fact that you've got to accept. City Attorney Pulliam, you provided me with arrest reports related to incidences around ShotSpotter. I'm counting more than four people that were unarmed. So, when the chief of police says that out of the 14, 13 were gun-related, how is that possible if I'm counting at least five that were unarmed people that were, that had warrants, but no firearms on their person when they're arrested within the ShotSpotter incident?
Sir, that data came from the police department.
Okay. So, chief, I don't know if you can get something on a slide so we can have an official record, because I know that you're saying that 13 out of 14 were gun-related, but an incident on 2441 Old Wilmington Road, it says it was unarmed, that the place of arrest was Cude Street, they were unarmed, that on Chesapeake Road, there was another individual who was unarmed who was arrested. I'm counting, again, more than just, how many did you say were not shots, were not firearm-related?
We have 14 subjects arrested, 13 out of the 14 was, was with the weapon.
Okay. So, I'll send you what the city attorney sent me, so that maybe you can look over it, and then, I, this is why I wanted a slide to be included, because I think we lose something in translation here, and I want us to be accurate, because I, I'm very surprised by that number, and I, and I don't believe it's accurate, and, and for us to say out loud that 13 out of 14 of these guns, you know, happened, because it sounds like maybe the one that you pointed out the recording of, you didn't get those folks yet.
No.
Is that the only one?
No, there's many more that we have, and, and that's, and that's the thing.
Yeah, that is the thing.
It's a long process, and, and it's not one of these situations where we, I mean, because some of these alerts, there's not even any trace of evidence. So, so therefore, you know, until we are able to work through each piece, you know, we, we may get later on a, a, a video camera or, or someone providing information that will lead us to that car that was sped off, that tag, and then we're able to identify those individuals. So, it, it takes a little while, so.
Well, and that, and that's why cities who've implemented this program responsibly will keep that data for the folks in the white shirts to review, but they don't put it in the vehicle so that there's the unintended consequence of officers going into a situation hot, because we have had somebody killed, or excuse me, lost their life while in custody the first day we turned on ShotSpotter. And it's something that we conveniently refuse to acknowledge every time we talk about the one life that it might have saved. I think at some point, we've got to be a little bit more honest about this technology and not just be the cheerleaders without any sense of deference to what community members have shared with us. You know, one thing that I cannot wait, and I, and I guess we're not going to be hearing it on November 1st, because we moved the work session unnecessarily, is that there are citizens in these areas that don't want ShotSpotter, and there's very legitimate reasons why, but we're not having anybody on this council that is willing to give those people a voice because they're stuck on the cop, the cop propaganda. Yeah. The bootlicking, yeah.
All right, Councilman McNair, your first time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, chief. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to
Receive the report.
Receive the report.
Yeah, I think we've got a little bit more to go. Is the manager's button pushed?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
If, if I may add, Steph has heard the comments and the feedback we've gotten from council, especially after the study, the results of the study were published. And Chief Bryant did mention that we have assembled a working group that includes PD, OCS, the city manager's office, and SPA. And we are working to close those gaps in our data and working to try and come up with a better and more consistent framework that tracks the performance of ShotSpotter and the impacts of the community on our investigations and how that data affects our community. So, we hear you, and we are working on it.
Thank you, ma'am, for that update.
All right. I'll come back to you, Councilwoman McNair, to receive it. I think chief has a few more slides. Go ahead, chief, I'm sorry.
We'll try to get through these here. This is our collaboration with our federal partners, and the results of these, working with our federal partners here, you'll see the, the amount of federally indicted individuals that have been arrested and seizures related to that, as well as firearms and currency seized. At this time, you'll see our, the numbers regarding our Group A crimes in terms of the percentage. Again, you'll see the numbers are all down except for robbery, which is up by 1.21%. But we're doubled, we're almost double digits on all the categories in terms of our property crimes. Here we have our numbers regarding our juveniles from January through September 25th. One of the questions that also, what we were trying to do is to provide some insight in total incident charges from 24 to 25, and we're up about almost 17% reflected on this slide here. The most pressing issue that we see here right now is the robbery, where it has almost doubled in terms of, from 24 to 25, with a increase of 106%. So, we're, we're tackling that as, as much as we can in terms of, with those involved in these juveniles. Next here, you'll see by quarter, the field contacts, the incident reports and total incident charges that we've had. Again, assaults is high in, in, in these numbers in terms of what we're looking at across the board. And lastly, these are slides pertaining to the juvenile protective order. Here it goes from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, the field contacts, the incidents reports associated with these, and the total charges.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question about this slide?
Go after Councilmember here. Will you finish, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilman Maheran and Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor. It, it wasn't so much on these particular slides, so if this is not the time, let me know, I'll get it later. During our FY '25 budget, we discussed some things that we were looking for, that we, there was a request for more speed centuries, our cameras that we were looking at, and, and other forms of technology, but especially those, those two, because that's something I speak about a lot during my community meetings. I did, I did receive a message that, I don't know if they said the speed centuries were in or close, well, I won't even try to say. If you could, can you give us, if this is the time between you or our assistant manager, on where, where are we standing with the, the speed century and our new camera technology that we were asking for?
So, yes, yes, sir. So, I can, I can provide some of that information in terms of, so we're, we're going in a phased process in terms of our technology. Right now, one of the first priorities was upgrading our server room, which has already taken place, and then now we're in the process of obtaining several different software, whether it be artificial intelligence to help us with this, but also we have looked into the speed centuries. We deployed several speed centuries throughout based on their requests from city council members throughout the city. But we also are obtaining more speed centuries, and we're also going to get some more for the school zones in terms of being able to have those deploy.
Yeah, and, and, and thank you for that, because I did get some deployments out in Scotty Hills and out in the Summer Hill community, but I was talking about the, the additional ones, and we're not there yet?
We're not there yet. We, we have, we've gotten, we received the quotes, but we haven't pushed the, the button to pick out which one we're going to go ahead and take.
And, and the ones that are, are coming, is there any additional data that it will be bringing, or is it some of what we already getting, or is anything new is going to be attached with these new centuries?
Well, with that, but also we have our license plate readers, which is going to be critical.
That's what I meant when I said cameras.
So, we're also doing that as well throughout the city to broaden our footprint. And, and that's one of the things that I would say that we, we lack in terms of our dispersment of cameras throughout the city. You know, I came from Fayetteville State where we had over 800 cameras on that small campus.
Wow.
The city here is about 250, 300. So, we got some work to do. We're already moving, and we're moving it up, and we're going to continue moving forward so that we can be utilizing the technology where we don't have the personnel to be able to do that.
Yeah, well, we'll be glad to get them, because our, our residents, they do ask about them.
Yes, sir.
And of course, I'll bring it back to you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Benevente.
Trying to understand the curfew 11 to 6 juvenile crimes, it's number 13. Are you saying that of that total number from are you saying that of that total number from quarter three, are those instances where you approached a young person for violating the curfew, or are these just incidences that occurred in that window of time?
These are incidents that happened within that window of time.
Okay, so have there been any times where the youth curfew was the impetus for an interaction with a young person?
Sir, I would tell you that most of the time that we approach these young people, we're looking at some other type of crime associated with it.
That makes a lot of sense to me, because, you know, my concern was always that you guys have enough serious stuff going on during these hours, that a curfew, at best is redundant, at worst creates unnecessary interaction with citizens, so that's why, when you heard people talk about, hey, what happens if someone just looks like they might not be eighteen, I think you guys are busy with real stuff, that you don't have to really worry about that potential, but was there any time where the youth curfew was, we always talk about all the tools that we live to give you guys in your toolbox, did you ever utilize that tool?
That tool is not one of the ones that we're going to utilize as our first option.
Did you use it at all thus far?
No, sir.
That's it, that's all my question, thank you, sir.
No, sir.
All right, Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief, I have a question about the juveniles B and E's for motor vehicles, it went down, but is there a shift changing, because now the robberies are going up?
Sir-
And what type of robberies are we talking about?
So, they could be common law robberies, and usually, most of the robberies are of, you know, threat and intimidation, so therefore, that's going to be considered to be a robbery versus a larceny, something like that, but those are the ones that we see that's going in there, now, it's going to be hard to say, based on, we're still early on into this collecting data, so it's going to take a little time for us to be able to show what impact that we're actually having regarding the protective order, so it's going to take a little time for us to be able to go ahead and start looking at the numbers, and seeing what impact that we're having in terms of with juvenile crime.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Chief, I did have a question, so are the juvenile assaults, do they include what happens at a school, somebody gets charged, or gets in a fight, and so-
That is correct, sir.
So really, that number is all encompassing of school activity, where things like that tend to happen?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
And we have another slide here that would also show those events as well.
Okay.
This next slide is in collaboration with Director John Jones's office, Office of Community Safety, as you'll see here, we've done numerous collaborations with them, where we've reached out to them on thirty-two calls for unhoused community, where they've come out and helped us out, they also acquired two PD professional staff on their team now that was working on some of the items that the Office of Community Safety will be assisting in now, and we continue to support them in any night events that they may have as well, so I know Director Jones is going to have a more comprehensive report later on for you all, but I just wanted to highlight some of the collaboration that we've already started with Office of Community Safety. Here's the calls starting of August twenty-fifth through September thirtieth, where you see the calls for service with two hundred and sixty-seven, with ninety-five incident reports, which is, goes back to our full comprehensive report, but these are what has taken place at the schools, and currently, we have fourteen certified SROs, we're going to be moving that number to eighteen in January. Here's our vice suppression for narcotics. As you see, our fentanyl, we had to correct the slide, our actual fentanyl seizure from twenty twenty-four was four point seven one, and we're up to nineteen, nineteen kilos at this time, and I think we've explained to you the impact that a small amount of fentanyl can have on our city. These are our numbers for nine one one dispatch, here you see, there's been a hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred calls, and with fire, and then for a total of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, also, you'll see on the slide here is the admin calls, that our dispatch center has for over a total of two hundred and ninety-two thousand calls. Traffic enforcement, I want to touch base a little bit regarding that, as you see these numbers here, at every community meeting, any encounter that I have with a citizen, their concerns are speeding, careless and reckless, folks driving through the red light, these are the results of these that we see in the city, and the only way that we're going to be able to change this behavior is by enforcement, and you'll see that being demonstrated in the upcoming slides. This is our numbers, or our map of our moving violations through January to September, as well as our non-moving violations, very important for us to do, you know, enforce both of those. Here, Councilman Benavente was asking the numbers to show from twenty-four to, compared to twenty twenty-five, as you'll see, we're up just over, almost five thousand stops, total stops, from January through September twenty twenty-five. Also, this is the breakdown by demographics, as you'll see, the numbers, they have raised in each of the categories. Also, you'll see the numbers in terms of searches from twenty twenty-four, also to twenty twenty-five, even though the numbers are, has raised from twenty-four to twenty-five, you'll notice that the percentage is almost, literally, almost the same, three point four seven percent, exactly the same in terms of vehicle searches.
Chief, just to clarify my request, the data that I feel like is not being compared appropriately, I think you guys did an accurate job on slide twenty-two, when you showed the disparity between white drivers being stopped and it being double, that black drivers are being stopped, but the more dramatic number is the number of searches, I think a bar graph showcasing the difference between, it looks like just a hundred and two versus almost nine hundred, eight hundred and seventy-three, is the kind of dramatic difference in the number of folks being searched, that is what's concerning to people, so that was a graph that I feel like is not being presented here, that eight hundred and seventy-three versus a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and two, is a dramatically different number.
So we'll go to that next slide, what you're seeing, so you saw that percentage, so this is the results of these searches as well, in terms of what we're able to seize in terms of drugs and weapons, where we're almost about forty percent, forty-one percent in black drivers' vehicle results from twenty-four, and also in twenty twenty-five, we're actually, we're up at sixty-one percent in terms of seizures, and also up in weapon seizures as well.
And it's noteworthy, I think, that for white drivers, it's also sixty percent when it comes to drugs.
And I'm going to show you on the next slide here, as you see, the vehicle stops, where you're talking about the hundred and two, we have one point two percent in two thousand and twenty-four, we actually went up to two percent in twenty-five, but I'll let you see the next slide, which kind of shows a little bit of correlations of what we're able to result, so therefore, we're talking about about forty-seven percent of the times we're seizing drugs, and eighteen, just over eighteen percent of weapons among white drivers in twenty twenty-four, but if you look in twenty twenty-five, we have sixty percent in drugs being seized, and twelve percent in weapons.
And I guess what I'm hoping, that not only I try to illustrate every time we do this, but, you know, in that book that I shared with you and with Director John Jones, the research shows that black, white, Asian, Hispanic, once an officer appropriately decides that, not only am I going to stop this vehicle, but I'm appropriately going to say that they need to be searched now, the likelihood of there being some kind of contraband is fairly equal across all demographics, so then, the question becomes if, why is it that one group ends up being stopped so many times more, when the ratios are fairly equal, and I think the answer there is not necessarily your responsibility to resolve necessarily, I think you said something a moment ago, and I want to make sure I heard you correctly, that changing behavior can only happen through enforcement?
Yes, sir.
And I think that's a huge misstatement, because really, infrastructure changes can change how fast someone is going down a street, without necessarily in having to be an enforcement matter, how many times does someone get a speeding ticket before they never speed again for the rest of their lives, I don't think there's a limit, I think people will always speed if they can get away with speeding, if they're not around.
That's correct, that's correct.
So what I'm saying is, it'll never be the case that you are on every single street every time someone is speeding, we've got to change the infrastructure at times to address that, it's not just a behavior thing.
Sir, you could have an infrastructure set up, but if individuals continue to speed, and feel that they can continue to speed without any penalty, they will, doesn't matter of the infrastructure, but when individuals believe that, hey, I'm going to get stopped, and I don't want to get fined, I don't want my insurance to go up, I don't want to get arrested, so there's a part of that also, it's not just infrastructure, it's also enforcement, so there's, I will say, you know, there is some truth in terms of some of these locations that where we will have some issues, but I would also agree, and I would, you know, firmly say that enforcement will change its behavior.
Well, and now, the last thing I'll ask then, is that, do you, and I feel I always get bad answers when I ask this question, but when you see the disparity in the way that we conduct our stops and searches, is it at all a concern for you, or do you have any interest in looking into what other departments have done in other parts of the country that have had no reduction in the number of guns they've recovered on an annual basis, and no reduction in the number of drugs that they've recovered on an annual basis, but have done something to reduce the disparity in the way we are stopping and searching our drivers in their cities, do you have any interest at all in addressing the disparity?
Sir, we have very much the interest in trying to do that, yes, we do, and unfortunately, as I stated last, we were at a conference last week, this is not just a Fayetteville issue, this is North Carolina nationwide, this is an issue, but one thing I would like for you to understand, and our citizens to understand, that when we target, or that we stop a vehicle, that's a violation, it's not because of the race or the person that's in the car, it is the violation that we stop, and then we move-
I trust that one hundred percent, sir, but what I'm saying is that, when you've seen other industries, right, you've seen schools that have shown that their rates of expulsion and suspension for black students is higher, when you see that hospitals, the maternal health outcomes for black babies is so much disparately more extreme for fatalities, we don't ask as a teacher or the doctor racist anymore, we just say that we need to stop these outcomes from happening, so please, let's move past, I guess, that first level of discussion, I don't care about proving that, you know, we're doing something discriminatory or racially biased, I'm saying the outcomes are obvious and are indisputable, what are we going to do about it now, and it does not require, doing something about it doesn't require proving that y'all are doing something racially biased, because the outcomes are that, so what are we going to do about it now, that's the real question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Benavente, every time we get to this point, it goes back to the money, okay, and so I think what will be helpful for me, because as we look at twenty-five thousand stopped, black drivers, thirteen thousand white stops this year, right, how many are for things like whatever prompted to stop, tags out, insurance out, lights not working, registration didn't check out, like, is there a category that captures that number, because we all know, all the things that my colleague named-
Yes, sir.
-are rooted in economics, but nobody wants to get to the economic conversation, right, you had ten minutes to preach. So we have to talk about the economics, right, and so it's easy for people who've never walked in this path to tell everybody what they need to do, and hadn't lived with neighborhoods where eighteen shots are fired, and all those things, but do you have a way to extract out the basis of the call that showed whether this is a call based on lapsed insurance, this is a call based on expired tags, or this is a call based on something that we can contribute to the real problem?
Yes, sir, we can extrapolate all that information regarding the non-moving violations, regulatory violations, and moving violations, so-
Because that would be helpful, because that's in this total number, so even though you had it broken down on screens, you had the green and the red dots, that you had just as many green dots for non-moving violations as you did for the moving violations, right?
Yes, sir.
So I would like to see that in some future report.
Yes, sir, and currently, right now, we're, I'm talking with our team and IT to try to develop a more comprehensive way to show what you're all asking for, in a manner that's a little bit more easier to read, and a little bit more lively in terms of, because a lot of the data changes from day to day.
And I can assure you, that as these cuts that are coming, that the county commission just had a special meeting for, when more is being cut, that people are going to be faced between the choice of paying a bill, or renewing insurance, or paying a bill and renewing tags, and so those kind of things contribute to it, the fact of the means is a part of it, so I welcome those discussions, but you got to talk about the real underlying problem, but I'll go to you, Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Chief, I want to go at a different angle, because you did not talk about the SROs and the TCOs too much, he did, what is our requirement, but I think our contract said we had to have so many by the end of January, I think it was?
Yes, we'll be having eighteen.
And we are currently at-
Fourteen, sir.
Fourteen?
Yes, sir.
And what is our capacity for our TCOs with Major Hunt, are we at, I think you said sixty-two?
It fluctuates daily, sir, every day we have folks, you know, it's a constant revolving window in terms of getting those TCOs, so I want to say it's about sixty-five vacancies that we, I mean, sixty-five positions, but it's constantly, I think we're at sixty-two, you know, I think right now, sixty-two right now, in terms of our TCOs.
Okay, and my second question is probably for Madam Attorney, where are we with getting our red light camera program back in the lawsuit with Wilmington, because I believe speeding is a habit, and we have to change that habit, because if you know that there's a light at a certain corner, and you got a ticket there once before, you're not going to speed there again.
I thought we were cleared, don't we?
There's some litigation out of another jurisdiction still pending, council, you know, you're welcome to reinstate it before that litigation is complete, you just are at risk of being sued as well.
Right, and we talked about that before, I wouldn't wait until this was over with, before we tried to reinstate it, so.
No, thank you.
Well, thank you, Chief, that was my two questions.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll continue.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, and just for a second time, we're going to let you continue, and then we'll catch the questions at the end.
And we're going to break down in terms of these, the vehicle stops, the others that you also see, the two percent, kind of consistent from twenty-four to twenty-five as well. And then the breakdown in terms of the others, and those percentages related to it, as you see, in twenty twenty-five, those percentages are also increasing in terms of drugs, and weapons as well. One of the topics that our team has been discussing in terms of transparency, one of the, you know, I think in the yearly report, we provide city council and the citizens here of Fayetteville, the numbers, but I think that I want to be able to provide these numbers on a quarterly basis, in terms of, to alleviate some of the perceptions out there, that we do not police our officers when they are engaged in activity or behavior or unprofessionalism, and so what I want to be able to do on these quarterlies is also to highlight what we do in terms of when we receive these complaints, and you'll see in terms of some of the citizens' complaints, you know, our complaints are down compared to twenty twenty-four, we have more positive comments compared to twenty twenty-four, and, you know, one of the things too, that we want to also make sure, that when we have our internal affairs doing their investigations, and they also would be giving what we have or our dispositions, in terms of sustainments, exonerations, and other violations than the complaint that was originally received, and the next slide here will show you exactly in terms of what we're able to do, of course, based on, you know, the limitations that we have on HR, but we just want to kind of give you, when we do receive these complaints, and what we're doing in terms of coaching, policy warnings, oral counseling, written reprimands, suspensions, demotions, and even dismissals, and a lot of these things even started before I actually arrived, Chief Brayden, you know, he was very much involved in terms of making sure upholding policy and laws, and making sure that these bad actors in the department are held to the standard, and that they will be, you know, held, you know, to the law, and make sure that they don't reflect badly on the rest of us that are out there trying to do that. that they don't reflect badly on the rest of us that are out there trying to do the job in a professional manner every day. As you see here, this is our departmental staffing at this time. We're down about 14% with 60 vacancies. We're having, we have a group of numbers coming in right now. We're hoping to be by 30 January, based on the numbers that are coming in. So we're, but like I said, I'm going to take some tips from Chief Dove and see what they did to get those folks. But just to give you an example, we can have 100 applicants. Out of that 100 applicants, we may qualify up to 50 that may make it through the first round of the backgrounds. Then out of that 50, we may end up with 25 that actually makes it to the academy. Out of that academy of 25, we're graduating about 12.
Oh, wow.
So that is a challenge.
They went from 100 to 12.
100 to 12. And that is a challenge. You know, we don't have, you know, an application pool of several hundred. We do not, you know? And that's been the challenge, you know, because we're always constantly, you know, and as you've seen in the other slides, as we dismissing folks as well, those are new vacancies that we have to make up for. So it's a constant, you know, battle that we're constantly doing, but we're pushing and pushing to make this number and be successful by the end of this fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I didn't have a question until you brought this up. And we were at the graduation and of the, I can't remember how many was graduated, but three had master's degrees.
Yes, sir.
How did you get that pool?
So we have, believe it or not, we have a pool of folks that, well, matter of fact, one of those that have their masters is actually working on their PhD. You know, so we have highly educated and qualified individuals, you know, that are, you know, wanting to do, some of them, you know, have went to school formally for accounting, and then they decide, no, I really want to be a cop. And, you know, they're coming here and we'll take them. You know, we can utilize that skill set. And so we have that, that's happening all across the nation. You know, folks wanting to come in, make a complete change, you know? And also, some of it is economy. You know, you may have some individuals that may have had a career in a particular field, and next thing you know, that field is, you know, being utilized in terms of maybe AI is taking their job now instead of, or robots are taking their jobs. So now they're coming to looking for other career fields that are stable for them, for their family, with benefits, you know, health insurance and everything else. And so those are the people that we're targeting and hoping to keep throughout our whole time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mayor Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Chief, I don't have a question. Thank you for your report. It was great. It was very informative. The one point that I wanted to make is exactly what you just said. Everybody talks about how we are down officers, and what you just said, I wanted to really repeat, and I think that there's something that we need to get that out. You have 100 recruits that come to you, and 12 make it through. So a lot of people say, you know, just become a police officer. You are a complete professional, and I think that we need to make sure that we get that out, that people understand that you just don't sign up and be a police officer. It is, and the numbers that you're giving me, I would say the ratio is harder to become a police officer than it probably is to be an officer in the Army. Because when you have a ratio of 100 people and 12 pass the test, pass the endurance to get out on the highway and protect us, I think that's something that needs to be really celebrated, and I don't think we're celebrating it enough. I do want to go back to Councilmember Thompson, what you said about you had people with master's degree. Having children under the age of 30, I fully understand that, because you are exactly right. You are not only a professional, but you are getting benefits and you are getting retirement. And I just think the way our society maybe has come, our culture has come in the past 20 years, that we've always expected to have public safety. And now it is, it's more, it's almost a luxury. But you're doing a great job, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Chief, you got a couple more with some community, National Night Out, Coffee with the Cops, or you?
Yes, sir. This is our community engagements throughout this past quarter. As you see, the National Night Out that we had throughout the city, some of them, we had it on the day of, and then we had some that were postponed due to weather. Also, we had Coffee with the Cop events throughout the city, all throughout the city during this quarter, our Special Olympic events, and we continued having several events throughout this quarter as well. And I think we're going to take some tips from Chief Dove in terms of showing how many community engagement events that we do have, because we do have a significant amount that happens, and we, you know, we're always engaged with our community here. As you see, our promotional and graduation ceremony that took place most recently. And this is our core values, vision statement and mission statement. And I will take any other questions that you have at this time.
All right. Councilmember Benevente?
I believe Councilmember McNair made the motion. I'll just second it and ask for a discussion.
All right. Councilmember McNair, I'll go to you to receive the report. Is that what you were eagerly waiting to do? All right. Most by Councilmember McNair to receive the report, seconded by Councilmember Benevente. All right, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, another great job. This is going to be our last time getting to discuss the quarterly report. So, you know, I hope that, you know, you get some more critical questions in the future from the council, because I know that over the past three and a half, almost four years that I've been on council, I never often see anyone else on council asking questions to be critical of the report. And it's not critical in the sense of being criticism, but iron sharpens iron, and I think it's important for y'all to get more perspective on the data that you're sharing from members of the community who have questions about the awesome power of government as it is exemplified through law enforcement. And I think that there's always going to be room and necessary space for these kinds of questions, but, you know, none of my concerns are coming from a place of disrespect for you or the work you do. I think about my father, who was a soldier, and me going to college and people saying nasty things about soldiers, right? Saying that, you know, they're killers and they're doing all these horrible things. And I was like, well, that's not what soldiers do. You can be critical of the government that sends them into situations that, you know, they need not be in, but, you know, supporting the troops doesn't necessarily mean supporting everything that the government sends them out to do. And so my criticism is never of the folks that are doing the hard work behind the badge. That's why I go out to all the graduations promotion ceremonies, because I want to inundate myself with the family experience and the pride that I see on everyone's faces to make sure that my criticism is never personal, but it's coming from a place of, you know, I guess, necessary professional concern. But a bigger concern that I have, and this is where I really want to ask you, begging you honestly, as I think a chief of very high integrity, you know that this council and probably the council after this is going to very rubber stamp thoughtlessly spend as much as you're going to ask for. It's going to be your responsibility to, I think, put some lines in the sand. You know, I remember a previous chief saying that, you know, the starting salary for a new officer shouldn't be over six figures, that there needs to be some grit and some tenacity built, and whether you're really meant for this job is not a get-rich-quick kind of job. But I bet you, if you ask the city council for an enormous amount of money for new officers, they would say yes, you know, ignoring sort of the secondary and third order harms that that comes from when you put quantity over quality. So that's just one example, sir, of the kinds of things that I think that you're going to have to sort of police yourself in, because we don't have a council that is going to put, I think, issues of equal justice, constitutional concerns or fiscal responsibility-
Wrap it up, Councilmember.
Or fiscal responsibility ahead of these things, because they consider anything less than complete praise and worship to be anti-police, which it isn't. But that's who you've got to work with, so good luck.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. Thank you, Chief. Thank you that the citizens decide who sit up here. And so when they speak, that's what it is. So thank you for that. All right. All right, council, look to you for your vote. Well, we got a vote on this. Received the report.
Green.
All right. All right. Unanimous, motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
All right. Have a good evening.